Thank you all for coming. Why don't you all introduce yourselves, say what your name is, where you're from, what your role is, that sort of thing.
Okay, my name is Steve Rebalack. I'm from Arlington, Massachusetts. I'm in, I'm actually running for, going to run for reelection this year. I'm a town meeting member. And I also serve on a couple of committees. The Information Technology Advisory Committee in Arlington, as well as the Zoning and Recotification Working Group. So I got mauled in local government because, you know, I like my town and I wanted to do something for it. And, you know, to be honest, I just like showing up and doing the work.
Good. I'm Brian Murray. I'm the state representative for this district, which includes Milford, Mendon, Hope Dale, and precinct one of Medway. I started, I was a town meeting member in 1985, right when I came back to Milford from law school, and continued as a town meeting member through my years on the school committee, and as a member of the Board of Selectmen, which ended up in 2016.
I'm Michael Soros. I live here in Milford. I'm a member of the Finance Committee in Milford, and I'm a town meeting member.
Thank you. First of all, I think Brian was a little shy in saying what he's done through town meeting for the community. Many of the facilities that you look in our town, whether it's the Senior Center, the Youth Center, a couple of the high schools, a couple of the schools, Brian has been personally responsible for making those things happen. So if you ever really want to know how to get things done, just call Brian. He is, he is, he is the one. I just don't want you to be shy.
We'll get to that later. That's fine. This is just an interesting.
My name is Harold Rhodes. I guess thirty-seven years here in Milford, and daughter who graduated Milford High School, very proud. And nine years as a town meeting member. I was six years on the Milford Commission on Disability. For the last three years, I was the chairman of the Commission on Disability. And now I'm the, I'm a member of the Governor's Architectural Access Board in Boston.
All right. And you've heard from me already. I'm a town meeting member in precinct eight, and I've been here for what, two years? No, one year. One year, not even. So it's been a while, Brian. Let's, let's start. Steve, you talked a little bit already about what made you want to run. So why don't, why don't we, what was the impetus? What, what made people want to get on Town Meeting? Was there like a specific issue? Was there an incident? Was there...
No, there was no...
Were you bitten by a radioactive town meeting member? What?
No, I was, there was no specific incident. My neighbor was a town meeting member, and I talked to him about it several times. And he, you know, he encouraged me to run. Some friends of mine encouraged me to run and, you know, help me campaign. And, you know, part of it was just, I got to a point in my life where I could clear a little bit, clear the time to, you know, to do, to do it.
Anyone else want to say anything?
Yeah, so I was born and raised in Milford. And I went to school in Connecticut, but, you know, and I lived in Connecticut for about seven years. In my mid twenties, I got married and I was about to start a family. My fiance was pregnant, and I decided to move back to Milford. And then that's when I hear about all the stories about the Milford Water Company and, and how, you know, how horrible the water was and the rates are going up. And that was kind of like the spark that got me interested. And so I went to Town Hall during one of the informative sessions. They have, this was going, you know, five, six years ago. And that's really kind of how I got started and how I, you know, got motivated and started learning what it meant to be involved and then finally ran for town meeting member.
And, well, in my first year being on the Commission on Disability, I learned that in many of the towns, the monies from handicap parking fines went to the Commission on Disability as opposed to going into the general fund. But in order for that to happen, Town Meeting had to take a couple of votes on, you know, accepting some laws and then accepting, you know, that the management handicap parking should go. So I got the good advice, "Well, Harold, if you want to get that done, you better be a Town Meeting member." And I said, "Okay." So I walked around my neighborhood in Janick Road, and, you know, Janick Road and Carp and those streets, and, you know, in precinct two. And fortunately enough, got on to be a member of Town Meeting. And then at the next Town Meeting, fortunately, can again, also with Brian's help, you know, that got passed. So now the handicap parking fines, which I hope you never have to pay because you all never park in handicap parking spots, but those from out of town who do, those fines go into the Commission on Disability for use for persons with disabilities. You remember that?
I do, yeah. No, and it's, and it's a nice way to get a steady stream of revenue into that committee to allow them to have some creativity and do some nice projects in the town without taking appropriation from your town budget. You know, for me, Town Meeting, it goes back a ways. Nineteen eighty-four, I, I got out of law school at the time. And there was a senate race. It was an open senate seat. It was Paul Songus's seat. And it was a pretty active race, so I volunteered for John Kerry and get very involved in that campaign. And he ultimately was, was successful. And I had an opportunity at that time to take a job in his Boston office. But my father was getting older at the time, and he had his law practice here in Milford, so he needed, needed some help. So I decided to come home and, you know, work with, with my dad, which, you know, was a great decision. And I wanted to get involved in things locally. You know, there wasn't any burning issue that I had. There wasn't any personal interest that I had on anything. But I just wanted to try to get involved in the town. And I got to know a fellow who I consider a valuable mentor in my career. And when we talk about doing things for the town of Milford, he alone was responsible, I think, for having this beautiful library in the town of Milford. And that was Paul Curran, very, very active in the community. One of the most intelligent guys that I ever met. He was a recovered alcoholic and really battled it bad. And I guess before I knew him, was, was really, you know, down in the doldrums. And when, when I got to know him, again, probably one of the most educated, well-reasoned person that I knew. And, you know, I just talked to him and he said, "Look, if you want to learn about what's going on, you start, you know, at Town Meeting because that's really the foundation. That's the basis of all that happens in town government." So I became a Town Meeting member in nineteen eighty-five and just basically sat back, kept my mouth closed, and listened to all of the veterans. And at that time, because Town Meeting's changed. I've seen so many changes in Town Meeting. And it's really sort of reflective, I think, of our society. But, you know, at that particular time, there were so many individuals in the community who were just interested in the community. You know, it wasn't, you know, "Well, this is my issue. I'm going to that Town Meeting, and that issue's over." Boom, they walk out the door, which seems to happen, you know, more frequently now. They were just interested in the community regardless of what the issue was. And there were some wonderful debates. There were some great debates back in the late eighties. There was one instance where two members came to fisticuffs on the vote, which I, which I saw. Oh yeah, I'll tell you the names later.
I think they're still there.
One, one is, one is still with us. But, so I was twenty-five years old.
The other guy lost.
He's deceased.
He really lost.
You know, so I was twenty-six years old, twenty-five years old. I'm like, "Wow!" You know, this is really something. And, you know, and then I just, you know, got involved from there. But it was really, I think, the building blocks, the foundation for my interest gave me the knowledge, I think, the experience, you know, to go forward and, and, you know, do some other things for the town.
So I wanted to talk now about the signatures real quick. Because again, this is supposedly informative for people who aren't Town Meeting. How many, by the way, how many people here are not on Milford Town Meeting already? That's a pretty good crowd. All right, I'll take it. All right, good. No, no. Well, I was, I, my hope was to get more attendees than speakers, so I think we're doing good. But I, what I wanted, so in Milford, you have to get thirty signatures. You register with the town clerk's office sometime in early January. And stop me when I get this wrong. And they give you paperwork. You're supposed to have them fill out their name and their address and what precinct they're in. You collect thirty signatures, you bring it back to Town Hall. You're certified to get on the ballot. So I wanted, oh, yes.
Did the thirty signatures have to be in your precinct?
Yes.
Or thirty signatures?
Thirty signatures from the precinct. If you want to run for local office, I believe it's fifty signatures, and those can be from any precinct.
How many seats are there?
There are, that's a good question. There are two hundred and forty seats between the eight precincts. There are ten seats open in each precinct each year. So it's like the senate, it's kind of staggered.
Are there more people that are around in their seats typically?
No, there are not. If you, if you go around, if you go out and you get the thirty signatures, you will be on Town Meeting. I can almost guarantee.
Rarely, rarely will you have eleven, eleven names in a precinct. But it does happen, but rarely. Usually...
So limited to eleven or...
It's limited to ten. So it's ten, so that eleventh, once you hit the eleventh, you know, one of the names on the ballot isn't gonna, isn't gonna be in Town Meeting. But a lot of times, we actually, through social media and whatnot, we try to advertise all these, "Hey, there's, you know, three open seats in precinct six. Go around your neighbors and you can run as a write-in candidate." And people can write, and that's actually how I moved during the nomination period. And so I missed that cutoff. I was already a Town Meeting member, but I moved to a different precinct. So I had to get reelected as a Town Meeting member. So I had to knock on doors and run as a write-in to get that ten seat.
Actually, no, someone was in Amber's Town Meeting with two votes. Yeah, one person voted for him and he voted for himself.
But what does Medway have? Is it an open Town Meeting or representative?
Actually, there was a, no, there was a, there was a local government symposium or whatever like that, but we weren't able to get it.
It is a Town Meeting, but I don't know. That's, that's right. It is, it is an open Town Meeting.
And Medway's an open Town... Well, it is representative. It's a representative Town Meeting. Oh gosh, as long as I...
Nineteen thirties, I think?
As long as I can remember. I mean, certainly in all the years I've been involved.
Could you explain the difference, so for, for those that don't know?
Open meeting, you can just go. If you're a resident of the town, you can just, just go. If you're a registered voter. Representative, you have to obviously go through the process that Mike and Brian are talking about.
Who gets to speak at the Town Meeting just to represent us? Because I came from Holliston, Mississippi.
No, any registered voter is entitled to speak at Town Meeting. Obviously, any Town Meeting member. And anybody out of town can speak unless a person objects. All it takes is one objection. And that's happened in the past. And the way the moderator gets away with, with that, he'll suspend the Town Meeting, okay? And then the, the person will come up to talk and, and, and say...
Parliamentary rules.
And then, and then he'll, and then he'll reconvene, you know? Oftentimes, if you have a building project, you might have an architect from so-and-so who's not a registered voter, and they want to come up. All it takes is one person to try to block it, but a clever Town Moderator can stop that.
Cassie had a question real quick before we go on.
Well, actually, it was kind of covered.
Oh.
I was gonna say, in my case, about four days before the election, I read an article saying that our precinct had like five members and I would get on the ballot. So I just, I Facebooked everybody I knew. I called anybody I knew in the precinct. I said, "Just please write me in."
That is also possible.
Good for you.
There are other ways. She, in my precinct, we had, one of our members had to resign. And she ended up having to do this right after the election. And we just basically recruited someone, got them to go to the first meeting, took a precinct vote, and wrote something up for the clerk and, you know, basically nominated them.
David? So if I understand, if you've got a precinct seven, if there are nine members from precinct seven that came up this year, and somebody shows up and said the precinct, the members of that precinct can then vote them in?
I believe they still have to collect the thirty signatures.
You still need to collect thirty signatures.
To qualify.
To qualify.
But you, but you do it after the election.
Okay, so that's how you fill in seats.
Correct.
And that happened a number of times at this last Town Meeting. I think there were four or five new Town Meeting members introduced.
It was like seven, yeah.
Based on seven.
It was a ton.
That, you know, filled seats that were open, you know, by vote of the members of the precincts.
Yeah, it was one time.
Congrats.
So how many signatures did you need? Did you need thirty?
I collected forty, I want to say, to be sure.
And, and sorry, it's important that you collect more than thirty signatures because that has to be thirty good signatures. That means that there's a registered voter at that address and they can read the name. So it's important, yeah, some of those names...
Reading the name is important.
Some of those names get crossed off because they can't either read it or they're no longer registered at that address.
I submitted I had twenty-nine names.
So you gotta go collect the, one more?
No, I had, I had extras. I just, I had like five extras on a sheet somewhere and I just threw it. I had... Now, when you're going door to door, did you have any sort of like elevator pitch to sort of tell people why you were running? How did you come up with your answer to that question? I mean, not a lot of people asked me when I ran, to be honest. Which was, which was surprising, I thought. It's just, "Will you sign this form?" And everybody said, "Yeah." Well, okay, one guy said, "No," and shut the door. But most people just said, "Yes," without asking.
Let me, let me go with that. You know, in Milford, we have a very fine, longstanding history of people knocking on doors. This is how all elections are, 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 you know, worked. That people are used to people knocking on doors and almost expected that if you don't come and ask for a vote, you don't get the vote. And so you can do all this advertising and all these signs and everything you like, but you really need to go and ask for a vote. It just happened to be in my neighborhood, you know, we're a pretty close neighborhood. So, you know, I just had the chance, you know, usually, when is it? Like January, you go around. So it's pretty cold, but you go around knocking on doors with your, you know, with the sheets. And I brought along my little puppy, you know.
As a prop.
As a prop. But okay, who can say no to a puppy?
And that's a consideration when you're going around asking for signatures in January. You want to keep the pitch short.
Yes.
So the person can get it, close the door, get inside, work some more.
And let me just say something about that. When you do it and you have people sign, the first time out, I learned this lesson. I didn't bring a clipboard and I didn't bring the right kind of pen. I brought those little ballpoint pens and they froze up. No, I'm serious. They froze up. And you have to be careful with those felt-tip pens because they sometimes get sloppy to read. But you go to Staples and you just explain what you need is an outdoor pen. And, you know, and they will point you to pens that'll stay colder, you know, or keep writing even in very cold temperatures. And really, there is nothing more frustrating than going out and getting a signature and the pen not working and everything. So clipboards, plenty of extra signatures, and pens that'll write in the cold.
And a plastic bag.
In a plastic bag, absolutely.
You didn't realize gathering signatures was such a technical thing, huh?
I mean, let me just say one more thing. I'll tell you when I ran, when I collected my signatures, it was the day of Super Bowl.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody was home.
That's smarter.
Everybody was home.
They must have been so happy to see you.
Well, it was in the afternoon and all I had to do, you know, and that's Sunday afternoon.
With this guy, I want to watch the game.
No, it's not. It was virtually the afternoon. It was in the afternoon before Super Bowl. Before Super Bowl.
Okay, smart.
Just a lot of people were home.
Time is everything.
Absolutely. Or during halftime.
So, well, yeah, so Super Bowl day is a good day to collect signatures.
There you go. By the way, I want to ask about the plastic bag a little bit, but we can do that offline. The other thing, at least in Milford, and I don't know if this is the case in other towns, but you only have to collect signatures once. Once you collect those thirty signatures and you get on Town Meeting, you never have to do it again. All you have to do is...
Unless you move.
That's right. Well, if you're lazy and you don't move, then, then they make it easy for you. All you have to do is check the little affidavit that says you want to continue, you want to run for reelection.
So the term for Town Meeting is three years?
Term is three years.
But you still are running for your ten, one of those seats.
Correct.
Because you could still lose to somebody else who's running, even though you asked to continue.
But, but it depends on what slot you're filling. Because if you're coming in at the beginning, it's a three-year term. But if you're filling a slot that someone has left, not.
You're filling the, the reunion.
It might be, there are one-year terms, right?
That's, that's a good point. Sometimes there are races for a two-year seat or one-year seat because someone moved out of town, you know, resigned or...
Changed addresses.
Whatever, yeah. Or otherwise, no longer Town Meeting member.
Lucia?
So once you're elected, do you keep track of whether you show up or not?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Sure.
There's no punishment for not showing up, but there is, they do keep track of it. But it's online somewhere.
And then people won't do they even look at that?
In the old days, it used to get published in the paper. In the old days, it used to get put in the Milford Daily News.
But at war.
Well, actually, last year, the Town Crier, in an effort to, I don't want to say shame Town Meeting members that don't show, but...
Or shame.
But due to a large amount of absences, they, they posted the attendance sheet.
Yeah, so that's like the old days. That's what they used to do in the old days, yeah.
So the Town Crier did do that. And now, actually, if you go online, Town Clerk will do that on a regular basis. This is, this is new.
Do the voters even look into it?
They may. Well, I'll tell you what, if you're running, if you're run, if you're running in a, in a precinct where there's eleven people there and someone doesn't show up, you're probably gonna point that out to everyone you knock on the door.
Cassie, real quick.
A pretty hard list of, of who, of attendance on the town website.
Oh, yes, they have...
The town website will have.
They do have...
I can find it.
Yeah, that information is there going back to 2010.
So with, I don't know about Milford. In Arlington, we have, we use clicker voting. So each, each of us gets a, is assigned a clicker for the session and, you know, the votes are recorded electronically. Our Town Clerk typically posts them on the website within, within a day. So not only can you see who was there, you could also see how they voted. And you could see if someone came and then left after intermission.
Very nice.
Apparently, that's, that's kind, that was kind of a thing in the past. You know, people would show up, get credit for the item, and bail.
Now, now, we're actually, so this is a good transition, so I'm glad you brought that up because Milford's Town Meeting has formed a committee to look at ways to reform Town Meeting because nobody's showing up, among other things.
Leaving early.
Right. So one of the things we're discussing is that sort of electronic voting. I mean, so let's start with that. There, some people have argued that that's not great because a lot of Milford Town Meeting members are also Town employees. They don't, they're worried that that would bring on pressure from on high, so to speak.
Additional pressure.
Additional, sure. What would you say to, what would you say to that?
You know, I think that's...
Sorry, I didn't...
No, I, I mean, if you're, if you're, if you're representing a precinct and you are, you know, also a Town employee, you know, you've, you're, ultimately, you're supposed to be representing your precinct. And if the Town Manager, you know, wants you to vote a certain way and you disagree with him, you, you know, you, you're gonna vote, you're gonna vote against him. I don't think, I mean, it's, it may let the Town Manager, they may know for, know for sure how you voted. It all depends on how, how the vote is taken. If you're doing like a standing vote or if you're, if you end up, if it ends up being close and you end up doing a voice vote, you know, it's a little different. Ultimately, you know, it's what you, it is what you signed up for. So if you, if you don't want the pressure...
Let someone else take the spot.
Yeah, yeah.
You're actually skirting the question about the clicker. I think he was, Brian, were you speaking specifically to using digital voting?
Yes, this is the some people I mentioned. Some people, this is, this is...
Yeah, so I, I would say that, I mean, you shouldn't be afraid to use the clicker to, to record your vote. And if you are afraid, then maybe you shouldn't be a Town Meeting member because if, now, Milford doesn't do that, so we, we don't have that issue.
They do have to.
We don't have that yet. You're right. And we may, we may in the future. But currently, we don't. Unless, unless someone calls for a roll call vote in which a vote gets recorded with your name, then it's not recorded. The numbers are recorded for two-thirds vote, so we'll have a, a standing vote and they'll just count up the totals, yays and ayes. But people don't know who weren't at the meeting who stood for what.
Justin had a question.
I'm just wondering with the digital voting, the option to abstain exists?
Yes.
Yes and, okay, because then in certain situations like that where it's like it's a conflict of interest for you to go on the issue, that you could just abstain instead of casting a ballot.
Sure.
Yeah, Town Meeting members are exempt under the conflict laws.
Oh, no, that's a, from legal...
Yeah, so you're not gonna have any conflict of interest.
Yeah, because from conflict, when it's, it's something that impacts your workplace.
From a public image.
Well, it might be a personal feeling or something, but, you know, from a legal point of view, yeah.
So there's, I have a book, Town Meeting. I have a copy of Town Meeting Time.
That's the Bible.
There's one upstairs if you want.
Yeah, there's a few upstairs, yeah.
Well, this talks about conflicts of interest. And ultimately, what they, you know, kind of the advice that they, the authors give is that, you know, you're in a town, everything is very local. Conflicts of interest are not rare. So, you know, as long as, just, you're better off disclosing it than trying to, trying to avoid it.
Judy, you had a question?
Yeah. For two. One is, I assume there must be a quorum to be read both. The second one is what meetings are Town Meeting members obligated to attend? Are they just Town Meetings or are they supposed to go to other meetings?
Yeah, no, just, just Town Meetings. And generally, you know, there's two for the year. You have the annual, Milford always has it, the third Monday in May. Some towns do it differently, a little earlier, a little later. And then there's the meeting in October, usually that last Monday in October, you know, for capital projects, set the tax rate, that kind of stuff.
And an occasional special.
Yes, yes, yes.
And as to, as to the quorum, Kate, do you want to speak to that or everyone relax?
So a Town Meeting member...
Oh, you'll ask that, I will. So when in doubt, stand up and ask for motion to adjourn. If the entire hall votes you down, you sit down and the meeting continues. Just not at any point.
No, so you absolutely, so, so it, the rule is, I believe it's half plus one. Correct me if I'm wrong. And so it, you know, you take attendance at the beginning and usually, you know, the moderator will announce a hundred and seventy-five people out of the two forty showed up. As meetings go on late into the night and the crowd starts to thin out, at a certain point, you can probably wonder, do we even have a quorum? And you can stand up and say, "I'd like to question the quorum." And then they have to redo the count, the attendance sheet, and...
But I, I do have one thing I would like to say to the Town Meeting, which is that if you want to not question the quorum, leave by the front door. When a cluster of twenty or more people leave together at the back door, you start to question.
Yeah.
Kate got burned by this last time. She made the mistake of doing this in the spring, questioning the quorum, and everyone crumbled at her.
In my defense, it... It was, it was...
She was right.
It was twelve-thirty.
Yes, also that.
It was twelve-thirty. It was, I mean, it was getting really late. And I don't blame her for personal, that, that was a long, long meeting. Half of that was my fault, and we'll go into that later, but, um...
I'm glad you did it.
Yeah.
It's actually one of the, one of the places where electronic voting comes in handy because every time there's a vote, you see how many people are there.
Yeah.
So if you, you know...
It's good.
So nobody has to question the quorum, it's just there.
If you get, if you see a hundred and thirty-two votes on the screen, well, then you're getting, for us, out of two hundred and fifty-two, one hundred and thirty-two would be, you know, you're getting down there.
So your moderator doesn't, or the Town Clerk, don't really track that? They used to do that more often than Holliston? Maybe because it's open?
I don't, yeah, I don't think they actually actively track.
Yeah, unless there's, unless someone questions the quorum. You know, once they meet, meet the quorum, they just continue until we dissolve the warrant.
I suspect it's going to be on my town's doorstep.
Question the quorum.
Jamie had a question.
I just want to pull the conversation back to electronic voting and a voice for standing up for a traditional New England Town Meeting that requires zero expenditure to make votes and count votes and tabulate votes and stopping, being enthusiastic about additional technology to do something that we have always done previously in the most simple of ways. I just want to say that technology is not the solution to every problem we have.
I agree.
So let's not get all warm and fuzzy about electronic voting.
It does take fifteen minutes every time we have to call a question.
Always has.
That does need...
That doesn't mean it should stay.
Yeah, if the best reason you have for doing something is it's always been that way, you shouldn't be doing it.
You just want to improve on progress. Should be more efficient. I just wanted to make sure that people are just...
Right, Jamie, do your point. There is a cost and we have to balance that against the benefit. Absolutely.
Okay. Brian, a question back?
Actually, for much, we just had our first Town Meeting with you. I've tried voting. Previous Town Meeting prior to that, we had, it was a, over-ride the schools. And we had people in the gymnasium, people in the elaborate, people in the auditorium. So to get, tell you the votes, that one meeting alone had to carry a which one other meeting because it was something I... But there's just reason why we got a electronic voting. Easily would add another one.
But, but that's an open Town Meeting, right? That's an open Town Meeting. So that's what you have. You have people with special interests. They're gonna show up. And then, of course, other times when you have the general business of the town, they don't exist. So that, that's a real problem. So that wouldn't be an issue in Milford because you've got that, that straight number. I mean, I, I, you know, I really agree with Jamie on that. I don't think that we ought to go gung ho with... I mean, I, I, you know, I, I really agree with Jamie on that, I don't think that we ought to go gung ho into that electronic voting system. It is a tradition, um, and in addition, you know, to like what Mike said in terms of the, the upfront cost, you know, what's the personnel cost after that? I mean, how much more responsibilities and obligations are going to be put on the town clerk's office? But, that's just my two cents on that, I don't have a vote on that anymore.
Christine had a question.
Yeah, with an open meeting, is there any criteria to how many people you need to even have a meeting? Is there a limit or?
There's a quorum, isn't there? Yep, you, no, but for an open meeting, there's a minimum quorum, right?
No, for an open meeting, do they have a minimum number?
Yeah, so what is it in Oxbridge? Do you know?
So, it has to be a representation from each area in the town, of the town?
Yeah.
I remember in Holliston, it was somewhere over a hundred.
Yeah, it could be a certain number, right?
Yeah, but I don't remember the exact.
Yeah, at the town.
I could be wrong, but I think Menden was a hundred for a minimum.
But there's no way you could possibly figure out, well, you represent this section, you're, I mean, it would take you, it might just figure that out.
We'd get out of town.
Right, right, are you increasing four or two, or, yeah?
It's just going to be, whatever that magic number is, if you got it right, we're, we're all set, you know what happens?
And sometimes don't have multiple precincts like Mr. Milford.
Arbitrary or percentage of the town populated, is it arbitrary or percentage of the town population, or does it depend on like bylaws of the town, or?
I, it is what?
Number, quarter.
Oh, for no, for an open meeting, I don't know, I'm sorry.
You'd have to ask someone.
I don't know.
In Sterling, in Sterling, and this is quite a few years ago, in Sterling, it was an open meeting, and, uh, it was just, it was registered voters, and if you showed up, you got to vote.
The Thomas Jefferson Rule, you know, people that showed up.
But, but was there a minimum, was there a minimum number, Dave?
No.
So, if two people came, you could have a town meeting?
Yeah, when they had a town meeting, yeah, but you never had problems, if you had people out in the hallways, I mean.
If it was a touchy subject, people would show up, we had a situation like that in Midway, and just people everywhere, and lots of, I'm surprised that people didn't come to blows, it was that.
I would imagine to be something written in your town meeting bylaws, that, whether it's a hundred minimum or if it's a percentage.
There may be, it never was, you could even question because it was, I was a part of the town meeting, time I could vote until. The meetings, and it was, uh, you never had.
The one thing I.
It was never an issue.
The one thing I'll say about this, and I know, I mean, I, I'm glad we're getting some of these questions, but I don't know what they are. And, uh, the, the moderator in your town, I'm sure that all these towns have a town moderator, and he will, and he, uh, his job basically is to know that town meeting time backwards and forwards. Um, and from my own personal experience, Mike Milford has been very patient with my questions, which he didn't have to be. So, um, call him or email him or whatever you have to do, and, uh, if you don't know how something works, if you don't know how to make a motion, if you don't know how to, uh, you know, all that, uh, run it by him, and, and he, he's good at giving that sort of advice.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that, because he, uh, he's been nothing but great whenever I have approached him and said, this is what I want to do, the, the article's written one way, I'd like to amend it, what do, how do I go about that motion, or, or how should I go about that? And he's been very, very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, most moderators, uh, they want the meeting to run smoothly.
Right.
And if you work with them to that end, they're usually really willing to work with you.
I did, I mean, I was just going to say, because in his experience with the town, goes back decades, so.
He's been our elected town moderator for what, close to forty years?
Um, selectman and town meeting member, and, yeah.
Yeah, so he knows the rules pretty good.
You really? Um, let's talk about the, let's talk about the process of, of making amendments, then. Uh, how do you, well, let's, before we even do that, how do we, how do you guys prepare for town meeting? How do you, uh, solicit feedback from your constituents? How do you, uh, you know, understand the items on the warrant and all that sort of thing?
What do you want to say?
So, the, I mean, the first, generally, as soon as the warrant opens, um, so the process of, are you guys familiar with warrants?
Um, start, start from the beginning.
Okay. Start from the beginning. Okay, so, warrant is a consistible list of articles, and the article is something that town meeting is going to take up. So, you might have an article that says, you know, to see if the town will amend the town bylaws for this purpose of establishing a tree preservation bylaw. So, it's, it's a general statement of, of what, of business. Um, now, associated with each of those articles, you eventually get a, what's called a main motion, which is, you know, the thing that you're actually going to vote on. So, in this example, it would be the text of said tree protection bylaw. So, when, um, the warrants, warrants are usually discussed by either the selectmen, the finance committee, or, or the redevelopment board, depending on what the, the topic is. Um, so, usually, when the warrant opens in January, I, I start going to a lot of meetings, and just listening to, you know, particular, I'll, I'll get, get a copy, get a copy of the warrant, start looking at the, um, what's been proposed, and then, um, you know, start going to meetings and taking notes, basically.
So, in Arlington, so that's interesting, in Arlington, are they telling you what the probable warrant articles are going to be in January?
Uh, usually, yes, we, you, well, I, I should say February.
Oh.
So, in, our warrant typically opens, uh, in late December and closes in late January. So, that's the time where the, you know, at least the article text has to be submitted.
When, when is your town meeting?
Uh, it is in April.
Oh, April, they're, they're about a month ahead of us.
Well, still.
About a month ahead of us.
When does, when does, when does the Milford warrant open?
Yeah, what, what happens in Milford, the, the, basically, the Board of Selectmen vote to open the warrant, okay? So, all that really means is it's available for citizens, uh, committees, whomever, to submit articles, um, to see whether or not they're going to be approved to be on, on the warrant for town meeting. Um, oh, boy, it's how, how fast you forget. Um, I, I want to remember, I want to think that we opened the warrant sometime in March and then closed it sometime in April.
March or April.
Yeah, somewhere on there, it's open for about a month or so. So, anybody can submit an article, and it's, it's basically a worksheet, you know, it's like, you know, what Mike had talked about, but, you know, it's just the rough framework, uh, whether it's a money article or not, you know, let's just say, you know, I want, uh, ten thousand dollars to, uh, do a playground at Memorial School. And that would be a worksheet. So, then in Milford, what happens is, our town council, we have a full-time town council, so he would take that worksheet and then fashion it into the proper language, um, as a, as a, an article for the, for the particular warrant. Then the warrant, uh, all of the articles get assembled, uh, and get discussed at the selectmen meetings. Um, articles that involve zoning changes need to be referred to the planning board for public hearings prior to the eligibility for town meeting discussion. Uh, money articles, such as Article Four, which is our entire budget, uh, the selectmen work hand in hand with the finance committee to really come up with the full Article Four that, that would make sense. Um, I can't recall, my sixteen years on the Board of Selectmen, I can't recall a time where we refused an article. I, I suppose it could happen in some towns, and if that's the case, for an annual town meeting, you can submit an article with ten signatures. For a special town meeting, you need a hundred signatures. Um, and then the article automatically, you know, be on the warrant. But, boy, I, I, there's nothing in my memory that, uh, you know, generally, that, that the boards that I've been on, the, the feeling is if the article is something that folks are concerned about, put it before the town meeting, have the debate, and see what the decision is.
I've seen articles where the sponsors have decided not to move forward with that article, either because they didn't get, uh, finance committee support or selectmen's support, uh, and so, they're still going to, um, town meeting, but usually, the sponsor will just, no, I'm passing over that, and we move on.
So, you, you don't have a lot where the recommendation was no action.
Recommendation from whom?
Uh, but say the selectmen.
Uh, the selectmen, you know, and, and again, you know, traditionally, the last, you know, five or ten years, the Board of Selectmen does vote to take, um, recommendations on certain articles. I, I, I thought that that was duplicitous because we're, as a board, voting to put all the articles on the warrant. So, I thought it, you know, said it itself, that we're supporting those articles going forward. Monetary articles is what the, is what the FinCom has a recommendation on. Uh, any money articles, uh, zoning articles, uh, the planning board would have a recommendation. Um, what else, planning board, FinCom.
So, we.
Uh, well, that'd be on a zoning, I mean.
Capital planning.
So, we used to have a capital planning committee.
That's a whole other story.
We de-commissioned them a little over a year ago, um, so it's just a finance committee.
Yeah, so monetary articles would be a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen. Zoning would be a recommendation, a report from the planning board, and the Board of Selectmen, they do make recommendations. Um, but really, the whole warrant is being approved by the selectmen, so.
And so, I mean, to, have you, I, this last warrant, uh, especially, there was, there was, um, there was the marijuana, uh, bylaw change, and so, there were, that one, I thought, was fairly active in terms of getting feedback from constituents. Other than that, have you, have, uh, have you heard a lot from your constituents from, uh, about the warrant articles? Uh, do you, how do you seek that feedback in total?
Well, uh, Milford just voted in a special town meeting to purchase, uh, the Milford Water Company.
Yay. That's what I don't.
And we had, you know, in my neighborhood, we had a lot of comments that I, that I received, either it'd be an email or just because we all know each other, and everyone on that particular topic, and I say everyone, I mean, I must've had twenty or thirty comments made to me as to what did I think about it and what did they think about it as, as well. I, I mean, I think you can imagine that on these very particular topics, whether it was the recent marijuana one or the purchase of the, of the, of the, uh, water company, or any of these major, you know, quality of life issues, they get a lot of feedback. Most of the others, not so much.
Now, do they seek you out, or did?
Well, I think everybody knew me, and they just sent me emails, and just saying, this is my perspective.
Okay.
Okay, so, as a new member of, of the town committee, they don't know me. I got my ten signatures or whatever, and yay, I'm on board, but they don't know me, and they don't know how to get a hold of me unless you are doing some advertising that I don't know about.
Yeah, so, so, um, I've been contacted twice, once on the Milford Casino way back, and then most recently on, on the, the marijuana bylaw.
Hmm.
Um, but up until recently, my precinct couldn't, unless they went to town hall and asked them what my address was, they had no way to contact me.
And no, and, and no way of me knowing who you are either.
Exactly.
You ask the average person on the street, who's your representative town, town under a meeting, meeting member?
Who's your town meeting?
It's like, it's just like asking me in the president nineteen forty-four, I have no idea.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so.
You're not A somebody to use a website.
Recently, recently, our town clerk has solicited, um, contact information from our, all our town meeting members, email, phone number, address, and now she posts them online. It's not a hundred percent complete, there's like ninety percent of the information is there. But, so now, via social media, you know, I've been posting here, if, if you, if you feel strongly about this issue, look up your town meeting members, contact information, send them an email, call them, write to them, whatever you feel comfortable with as a medium, and contact them.
Right.
I wondered if the capital committee decision to create a capital committee had anything to do with the plan you were having moving forward to buy the water company, was that related at all? I'm sorry?
The, the decision was based upon our groundwater.
Wait, um, I know all about the water, I probably was in Milford.
Do you have a?
Actually, I was going to say about, um, contacting your representative person, I actually would advocate for anybody in town to actually just show up and, uh, be recognized to speak, because actually contacting your representative
Absolutely.
That's a good idea.
has very little effect on whether that person will relay your opinion, or voice your opinion, or even vote your specific opinion.
Hmm.
Uh, so, if you actually really care about any issues, even if you're not an elected member, just show up and speak.
If, if you care about multiple issues, go get thirty signatures, and you can vote on them.
No, just go and speak.
It, it sounds like it's almost a, you know, suggest a blog. As an, as an, as an R T M member, here's my blog, this is what I've heard from people, four people, eight people, twenty-seven people, whatever the numbers are, and this is the general direction of what's going on in terms of forming opinions, we, and then you can add, I went to this meeting with the, the water company, I oversaw it, and looked at it.
Are you surprised to know how many few people know how to do that, how to just make a blog?
Well, and that's one of the things that I'm, where I'm also going to go, is, by the way, we should be training people on how to write blogs, because, I don't know how to, I mean, I mean, but the point is, the average person, there's no clue
Hmm.
how to initiate a blog, how to keep it going, other than typing a, you know, document, well, where do I send it? You know, I know, I'm supposed to hit some button, but I don't know what button to hit.
A lot smarter than you, still, than we started, actually, for educating.
Right. Judy, uh, one more question, then I think we should probably wrap up.
I just, um, when I, I moved in July, and when some of these issues started to come, I, none of the water issues. Uh, but, um, I went to find out about town meeting and learn that it's representative. And then I looked for the list, and at that time, I just listened to the street agencies. I thought, well, I feel kind of funny going out to knocking on the door, maybe they're not there anymore. So, it's good to hear that it's been enhanced. I think the other thing that would be helpful to put on the site, and maybe it was there and I missed it, was just a little more explanation, because I wasn't sure whether I could go to the town meetings, and some apparently couldn't vote.
So, it, it would be just good, and this meeting, when I saw it in the papers, I said, okay, I don't want to get some answers.
Yeah.
That would be good.
So, in, um, in Arlington, we have a sort of a tradition of, um, between, you know, when those, you know, between the close of the warrant and the beginning of town meeting of, um, having precinct meetings. Um, so, usually, it's a couple of precincts, and, uh, they'll pick a, you know, uh, a Saturday or a Sunday afternoon, and you, you, and you'll rip, you know, get the library, get the, uh, community room at the library or something, and then just, um, invite people to present on articles, um, you know, and just, you could, you could also use it to get a sense of, you know, would, would, would people, would, do people have any strong opinions about anything on the warrant this year?
That's a good idea. We, we did that in Milford, that was done probably about ten, fifteen years ago by the former town clerk, he stopped because people weren't coming.
All right, that's not a great note to end on, but we're running out of time. Um, thank you all for coming here, and thank you all for, for participating.